Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work at this time. Would you please stand for the invocation, which will be delivered by Councilman Dr. Curtis Edmonds, Sr., followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds?
Gracious God, our Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you, Lord, for assembling us here to carry out the business of our city. We ask, God, that you give us focus and soundness, clarity of speech, that, Lord, we all might be on the same accord to move our city ahead. We thank you for what you have already done and the things that you are yet to do. We give you glory and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and through the Republic from which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
There are seven members of council present.
Okay. Members of the City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of June 24th, 2013, a call meeting of June 25th, 2013, and a regular meeting of June 25th, 2013. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
With adoption.
You have a motion in a second and you will be voting electronically. The minutes have been adopted, seven to zero.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your time, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of your five minutes, you will hear a beep and see a red light, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at this time. Public hearing, 13-288, Public Hearing on Use Permit Applications, UP 13-06. Mount Hermon Interstate Sign Company requests a use permit to replace the existing pylon and price signs with new signs at an unmanned fuel station at 2401 Turnpike Road. The property is owned by Quarles Petroleum. It's zoned IN industrial. The Comprehensive Plan's Generalized Future Land Use Map recommends this site as part of a mixed-use corridor. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Jonathan Hartley, Planning Administrator in the City Planning Department. Your first application this evening is a request to replace an existing sign with a new pylon or pole sign at Quarles Fuel Center on Turnpike Road. On the left, you have the existing sign, while on the right, you have the zoning map, which indicates that the property is zoned industrial IN. And in this zoning district, a sign requires a use permit, which is why it's before you This is an aerial photo of the site. The site is indicated in yellow, and it's located at the intersection of Turnpike and Confederate Avenue. Excuse me. This is a photo looking north or northeast along Turnpike Road, and then a follow-up looking west or southwest along Turnpike Road. This is a photo of the fueling center. It's a private, essentially a private fueling center used by businesses and fleet vehicles. It is not open to the public in general, has no canopies, there are four pump pylons, an operations building, and the sign that's being requested. On the left, you have the existing sign. On the right, you have the proposed sign. The proposed sign will be 14.3 feet tall. The requirement in this district is no higher than 26 feet, and the area of the proposed sign is 58 square feet, and the maximum area in this district is 125 feet. The Planning Commission considered this item at their meeting on June 4th and recommended approval with the conditions by a vote of seven to zero. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'll attempt to answer them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of council, I have no registered speakers. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on this item, please come forth, state your name and address for the record, and you will be given five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, this public hearing is now closed. We have a motion in a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item was approved, seven to zero. UP 13-07, Truxton, Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church requests a use permit to operate a daycare center Monday through Friday in the church facilities located at 3310 Deep Creek Boulevard and 14 through 27 Manly Street. The Comprehensive Plan's Generalized Future Land Use Map recommends this site for institutional uses. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. And I have no registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, again, my name is Jonathan Hartley, Planning Administrator in the City Planning Department. This next application is for a use permit to operate a child daycare center at Mount Carmel Baptist Church at the intersection of Deep Creek Boulevard and Portsmouth Boulevard. On the left, you have a picture of the church, and on the right, you have the zoning map for the area. The surrounding area is zoned historic residential. It's part of the Truxton Historic District. Again, you have an aerial photo with the site highlighted in yellow. The site is surrounded primarily by single-family residential development. There is some open space, which is owned by the City of Portsmouth to the east of the property, and some commercial activity to the northeast. This is a view of the church from the corner, and then looking back at the intersection of Deep Creek and Portsmouth Boulevard, looking essentially northeast. As I indicated before, it's mainly surrounded by residential uses. The top photo is on Manly Street, which is the street behind the church, and then Portsmouth Boulevard and some of the homes in the Truxton Historic District. The church proposes to keep up to 26 children five days a week. The facility contains sufficient off-street parking for the use and meets the required drop-off and pickup space required by the zoning ordinance. The playground would be located at the rear of the building where the, on Manly Street in the area presently used for parking of church vans, as seen in the lower photo on the left. This is an overall depiction of the site, and you have the drop-off and pickup area in yellow, which again is a requirement of the ordinance, and then the playground is in the green in the lower part of the photo. The Planning Commission, at their meeting on June 4th, recommended approval of the proposed use permit with the conditions by a vote of seven to zero. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on this item, please come forth, state your name and address for the record, and you will be given five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, this public hearing is closed. We have a motion in a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item has been approved, seven to zero. City Manager's Report, 13-289, Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Execute a Deed of Vacation and Release of a Drainage Easement at 300 Wythe Street. Vision principle: Effective Responsive Government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion in a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item was adopted, seven to zero. New Business, 13-290, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to move that the following citizens be appointed to a special ad hoc committee for the purpose of deliberating whether Portsmouth is going to accommodate food trucks, if you may. The citizens are Gene Breckenridge, Alice Amory, Louis Nappa, Curtis Lyons, Corey D. Wells, and Candace Reed.
Second.
You have a motion in a second, and you will be voting electronically. These appointments have been adopted, seven to zero.
Also, since we're always seeking new volunteers for our boards and commissions, I'm going to have the Vice Mayor is going to go over some needs that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. For those in the audience, as well as those at home, we have immediate vacancies on the following boards. Behavior Services Advisory Board, we have one position. The Historic Preservation Commission, we have two positions for residents in the historic districts of Port Norfolk and Old Town. And Portsmouth Parking Authority, we have one position. The Portsmouth Ports and Industrial Commission, we have one position. And the Social Services Advisory Commission, we have one position. The Supplemental Retirement Board, we have two positions, as well as two positions on the Wetlands Board. So we encourage you to go online and submit your application, or call the Clerk's office, and they'll be glad to assist you. Thank you.
13-291, Item submitted by Councilmembers.
Thank you. Let me, first of all, say how pleased we were last week to have the Chief of Naval Operations, Admiral Greenard, to visit Hampton Roads, and as you all know, he is the big cheese. He runs all of the operations of the Navy, and rarely does he get here to Hampton Roads. Congressman Randy Forbes invited him here to speak and talk about sequestration and a lot of the other things that are looming in the area, and it was quite an event. We had all of the mayors in the region there, and the Admiral was quite impressed with the participation of all the elected officials, and want to thank Congressman Randy Forbes for his efforts in bringing him here, because we all understand the importance of the Department of Defense here in this region. It's about 48 percent of our economy, and so that's extremely important. So we want to thank the Admiral for coming and thank Congressman. Also, on 4th of July, I had the great pleasure of meeting a Portsmouth resident who received the Congressional Gold Medal, or Medal of Honor, and his name was Mr. William Randolph Davis. I didn't set out to meet Mr. Davis. I actually went to visit James Overton. He was home, and his wife said she wanted me to meet her Uncle Rudy, and that Uncle Rudy had received this Medal of Honor and wanted to know if she could call and make an appointment for me to meet Uncle Rudy. And I said, "Well, no, let's go meet Uncle Rudy now." And we got in the car and drove over, and I had no idea. Uncle Rudy was a gentleman named Mr. William Rudolph Davis, graduated from I.C. Norcom in 1941. He was one of the first of 20,000 Marines, African-American Marines, that were admitted into the Marine Corps after President Franklin Delano Roosevelt signed Executive Order Number 8802, authorizing and allowing African-Americans the right to fight for their country and to enter the Marine Corps. He served in World War II and was discharged in 1946, and I spent three hours on that man's porch. And he was quite thrilled to see the mayor on 4th of July on his porch talking to him about his time that he served in the South Pacific Islands. And so it was quite a thrill, and it was interesting that the president recognized all of those Marines from, and they called it Muntfoot Point, and it was down in Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, but back then, the African-Americans and the whites couldn't train together, so they created a training site just adjacent to it, and they recognized or tried to recognize all of the existing ones that were still alive, and they left off Uncle Rudy and a couple other people, and so they did a local ceremony here for that. So that was quite an honor and a privilege. So Uncle Rudy, if you're listening, I really appreciate you spending your 4th of July with the mayor and all of the things that you do and all of our others do for our country. And then finally, I finally had the walk of a lifetime with the Cavalier Manor Civic League, and I think we walked about a mile and a half, Mr. Wright, and I was trying to slow down for him, and he was trying to slow down for me, but it was quite a walk, and one of the highlights I did get out of that, Mr. Rowe, was all of the members of the Civic League are really appreciative, the environmental inspectors that we have out there. I think you'll rotate them through Cavalier Manor, and it was quite a few compliments of what the city was doing and how we were making sure that everybody was in compliance. And so that's always good news to hear. But with that, are there anybody, other reports? Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended over July the 4th, Craddock Community Heather 95th Independence Day Celebration, and a few of the speakers, former Vice Mayor Charles Whitehurst, who's a Marine Corps veteran, and also another Marine Sergeant Major Toler, who we see here frequently. Both of them gave speeches. The Vice Mayor Cherry gave the welcoming remarks, but they had a bike parade. If you've never been to a Craddock ceremony, it's kind of special. It really gives a small-town flavor to it and makes you feel good about what the real meaning of Independence Day is. So that was real good. Also stopped by Long Point, had their first annual barbecue cook-off. I understand you were there earlier, Mayor. Had a couple plates of barbecue and lemon meringue pie. I'm just kidding, because I know he didn't. But they, it was their first annual barbecue cook-off, and they plan on having it every year, about the same time.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Edmonds?
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow councilmen and councilwomen, to the audience that's here and those that are watching on television, I was invited to a Walmart talk concerning veterans hiring. They wanted to hire 100,000 veterans, and they have set out an initiative to do so. They have a five-year program set forth, and they have $10 million in that commitment to hire 100,000 veterans, and they wanted to come to the Hampton Roads area, and they met in the Sheraton over at Norfolk. I wish they could have met at the Renaissance, but that's okay. And they have a strong support group and wanted some advice from some of the folk that they invited. Congressman Bobby Scott got up and said some words. Delegate Matthew James was there. Burford from Norfolk City Council was there as well. The head of this for Walmart is retired U.S. Army Brigadier General Gary Prophet. He's the Senior Director of Military Programs for Walmart, and this is a statement that they wanted me to share. On May 27, 2013, Walmart launched their commitment to offer jobs to recently separated veterans, veterans who have separated from active duty within the last 12 months and have priority access to their open jobs throughout the United States. As Walmart hosts a myriad of jobs in our stores and clubs, we also would like to select opportunities in our distribution centers for people to be employed as well. Walmart believes that every recently separated veteran can find employment at Walmart, even if they don't stay there. It's a good starting point for them to jump into employment other places as well. In five years, they expect the project of this commitment to result in the hiring of more than 100,000 veterans. And in addition to that hiring commitment, Walmart supports career opportunities with that as well, and there's room for promotion and moving up. Their company is so excited about it that they're deciding to increase it to $20 million over the next five years. And for any veteran that's listening, recently discharged from the military, they can go on Walmart's webpage, walmartcareerswithadmissions.com, and find out more information on this. I thought this was very important, that they wanted to come to the Hampton Roads area because of the military presence here. And so any veteran that's listening, please take advantage of this. I think it's a great opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to recognize two really outstanding efforts that our city staff has undertaken in the last week. Sometimes we don't remember to say thank you to folks who go above and beyond the call of duty, but on Saturday night, last Saturday night of the holiday weekend, some folks decided it was a good idea to try to steal one of the cannons that sit along the seawall at the foot of High Street. I don't know how they thought they were going to do it. Those things must weigh several tons. But anyway, suffice it to say, they were able to unhook some bolts, and a resident of Admiral's Landing called to report this, and there were city staff members out rebolting that cannon back to its plate on Saturday night of a holiday weekend. And I think that's pretty nice, and thank you, Mr. Bagley, and your team. And for those who live along Crawford Parkway in the downtown waterfront, they will be pleased to know that, thanks to Chief Hargis and a whole lot of other people, the sunken sailboat that's been in Crawford Bay, I think, for about a year was removed today. And so there's no more sunken boat in Crawford Bay as a navigational hazard to boaters. So there are a lot of folks really happy about that. So thank you, Chief Hargis.
All right. Very good. Mr. Moody?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to let citizens know that council will be having its annual retreat coming up Friday out at Badawi. Gets underway at approximately 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and it is open to the public. The public is certainly invited to attend. I like the fact that it is in Portsmouth, and people can reach it very easily. It's all-day Friday up until 5:00 p.m. Then we reconvene again on Saturday, July 13th, at 9:00 a.m. at the same place, and that session runs until 12:00 noon on Saturday. So hopefully, we'll see some folks from the public out there joining us.
Absolutely. Well done. Madam Clerk?
13-292, Report on Pending Items. Ms. Bernadette Hogg?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and citizens. For the last six months, we've been working on a recycling project, and it just feels like this week that all of the pieces are starting to come together, and things are starting to happen so rapidly, and I wanted to report to you tonight on a lot of different things that are going on. First of all, Monday, our contractors started putting out the 95-gallon recycle cans, and they started in the most north and west portion of the city, and they'll be working back towards the Friday route. So they'll be starting on the Monday route. When they finish the Monday route, they'll move over and start on the Tuesday route. So citizens will start seeing those cans showing up at their house, and we're receiving calls and trying to deal with issues that they may have. Secondly, behind the recycle carts, the recycle page is up on the website. I've had a lot of comments from members of council and citizens about getting that up and getting it running, and the marketing staff has done an outstanding job of putting that, the IT stuff into place. And the mayor is holding up now a label that will be inside of each one of the cans as the citizen sees. And opens a can, Mr. Moody. We're real excited about these cans. I think they're really going to make a lot of people, the ease of recycling is there now. Folks really get excited about recycling. Facebook is up, Twitter's up, YouTube is up, and we're getting large numbers, email blasts are going out, and I thought it was interesting. I got these numbers yesterday from my marketing staff. We had 4,212 impressions from Facebook. If you're a social media person, you know what that means. If you don't, it doesn't mean anything to you. It has 75 shares, 260 likes, I think I know what a like is, 76 comments, and then YouTube had 126 views. So everyone start hitting those social media sites so we can get those numbers even higher. There's a lot of information there. If you're questioning about what recycling, what is going on with recycling, all that information is out and available to you. Also, if you watch Channel 48, you'll see that there's several PSAs running on several different things. But the main thing I want to talk about is tomorrow night, from 5:00 to 8:00, at Badawi Pavilion, there's a Meet the Driver Night, and it's a big event. We've got vendors there who deal with recycling. They'll be able to talk to you about what happens to recycling from the time we pick it up from the curb to the time it's recycled into other articles of clothing, other items that we use every day. So it's an interesting educational experience. We'll have things for the kids to do. We've got to make a recycle pizza. There's, we're going to have Ice Cream Social. If you come, you'll get ice cream in a trash can. If you imagine that, we've got little miniature trash cans that look just like the recycle cans, and you'll get a scoop of ice cream in that, and you can enjoy yourself, and look at all of the, the new trucks are there. They'll be outside. They're nice and clean and crisp, and most importantly, and I got to tell you that our drivers have really gone through a transition, because we've gone from having trash truck drivers to equipment operators, and we're trying to emphasize that. And three of the drivers that we selected for this recycle program are really excited. They're getting really involved about what recycling is, and they're ready to talk to people, and you get your picture taken with them. You've heard from Donna Corbus a lot, and she calls them our recycle heroes, environmental heroes, and that's really what they are. They really are excited about what they're doing. And the trucks are beautiful. They've got big signs on the side that say August 19th is our first collection day. So we're really hitting the road, running now, trying to get everybody geared up to recycle and keep this ball rolling forward, because the more we recycle, the better it is on our environment, and certainly saves the city money in the long run. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about recycling, or where we are, or things that are coming up.
Everyone should have their recycle bens by when, Dennis?
By the 28th, 29th of July. That's depending on the schedule staying, that depends on whether or not they can meet their deadlines. Yesterday, they lost four hours in training, and some other things happened, but they assured me today that they would get caught up before the end of the week. So by the 28th, we would expect that. And also, you can expect coming in the mail over the next day or so. Hopefully, some citizens got those today. They're little flyers that have dates on them, when your collection date is. It's a calendar with blue and white, and there'll be another follow-up mailer coming that actually identifies whether you're a white week or a blue week. So hold on to that. There's a lot of good information in that. It talks about what we're going to collect and what we're not going to collect, and how you need to prepare your items for recycling.
And tomorrow at Badawi, from 5 until?
From 5 until 8, or until everybody leaves.
5 until any time you leave, come out and get all the information you want. Now, we've reiterated this before, this whole program, we're looking at it as a cost-neutral. Won't cost the city, citizens, anybody else anything. We're going to pay for this, and the mathematics that we use is based on a 20 percent participation.
That's correct.
And I'm sure with all the excitement and all of the inquiries that we've got, that we can beat that number. So anything above 20 percent, will that be a surplus? Is that a good word, Mr. Manager?
Savings.
Savings, okay. So let's see if we can't all get out and do our part and show up tomorrow to be able to get as much information as we can, and certainly, we ought to be able in this city to get greater than 20 percent participation. Thank you, guys, for all of what you're doing, and we're looking forward to it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
13-293, Non-Agenda Speakers. 13-293, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker, Carol McGill.
Good evening. My name's Carol McGill. I'm from the Craddock section.
Pull your... Ms. McGill, if you pull the mic down to... Yes, thank you.
I forgot I'm vertically challenged. I have a question. I received a city assessment on my property for tax year 1314 of $146,330. Assessment was the same as last year. Think nothing of it. In March, I attempted to refinance from a 15 to a 30-year mortgage. It was denied because my appraisal said my home was worth $120,000. That caused me to appeal the assessment. The Board of Equalization said the assessment would not be changed since it was the fair market value of my home. I'm sorry, but I don't see how $120,000 and $146,000 are same fair market value. How was this assessment determined? No specific justification was living on the denial. I would like the city assessed value reduced. How do I proceed with this? It's not... I gave a copy of the paid appraisal to the Board of Equalization at the time of the appeal. They said the appraisal was wrong and the city assessment was correct. I do not see. I saw the five properties they have compared, and there isn't one that exceeds $130,000. I would like an answer to how I go from this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll get somebody to get with you, but we have that equalization board made up of independent folks that look at that as a second set of eyes of what our assessor does to make sure we give you that balance and give you that opportunity to do that. And unfortunately, you ran across that discrepancy because we don't see that often, do we, Madam? Okay. So, we'll get somebody to get you an answer, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up. That's my walking buddy.
You're already being facetious, ma'am.
You didn't walk with me when I came out there.
You don't want me to get on you tonight, but... Because I came here to say some things, but I'm going to be nice.
Okay, be nice.
Be very sweet to you tonight. But anyway, good evening. My name is Sinise Johnson, and one of my residents is in the Cavalier Manor section. Lovely Cavalier Manor section of Portsmouth, Virginia. And I came tonight, I wanted to talk about the recycling process, but since the gentleman mentioned that they're going to have a meeting tomorrow at Badawi, I definitely would be there. But one of my main concerns was whether or not when you all start the process of giving each resident the recycling, new recycling facility, bins. I wanted to know, have you all planned on notifying the residents about continuing to put their personal household items where we have the present recycling bins at now, Mayor? If you were being observant, when you was at the Cavalier Manor tennis courts a couple of weeks ago, you probably noticed some trash outside the recycling bin, and I think there was some, a couple of chairs are still there. People have brought some household goods over that is still there, and I've called several times, and I asked Mr. Griffin, one of the specialists at the Cavalier Manor Center, to notify the city to come up and remove the trash because it's an eyesore. And my feelings is when those recycling bins are removed, people are going to continue to come and sit trash on that platform. There's a concrete platform where the recycling bins sit at, and it's a concern that they're going to continue to dump. So, that was one of my questions, my first question. Do you have any comment on that?
No, ma'am, but we'll make sure we keep an eye out and keep a watchful eye on it. As a matter of fact, we've got a rotation per... Mr. Rowe, go ahead and finish your comments, and then we'll respond.
And another comment, since you're always talking to me about these tennis courts, I wanted to let you know that that's not one of my lifetime dreams, to have the Cavalier Manor tennis courts renovated, because I have other endeavors of my own that I would like to do while I'm still here. But anyway, I just wanted to bring you up to date on some things since I've met with you and the whole entire city council, me and my colleagues, a couple of... I think it was last year, and we all provided you all with a vanilla folder. And in that vanilla folder, we had a lot of information about the USTA. I'm quite sure you've heard of United States Tennis Association. It's the largest tennis association on the planet, a billion-dollar organization. Serena Williams just won the French Open, you know, but she lost Wilmington. And this year, we've had 50 American new prospective professionals to join the USTA. So, that's inspiring because the USTA is trying to encourage more young Americans to get involved with tennis. Because what's going on now, all the trophies, Wilmington Trophy, the US Open Trophy, and French Open, all those trophies are going to Europeans. So, they're trying to motivate and bring young kids into the profession. That's why I'm an advocate. And when we've been for the past five years, we've been at the Cavalier Manor, some program, but what me and my colleagues are doing now, we're trying, we're going to try to organize a summer camp this summer for the kids. I've already called and asked, supporting cleaning up the tennis courts because we still got the cracks there, although you said that they look beautiful to you. You know, you say, "Oh, they're beautiful, Ms. Johnson," but we still have a lot of work to be done. But anyway, I would appreciate if you would become a supportive, very supportive of me and not become an adversary. I really would. And then I also have met, I just want you to know, I've met with Mr. Rowe, who was very supportive. I met with Margaret Thorne, since we talked, and Brandon Garfree, and they have considered, you know, putting everything on the budget. I know it takes money, you know, but that's what we're working on now. But in the present time, me and my colleagues are doing some professional tennis coaching where we charge. You know, a lesson can cost as much as $80 an hour. And one of my colleagues has just accepted the head teaching proposition at Willem &amp; Mary. I have three at Virginia Beach Tennis and Country Club, one at Tywhort, and they're trying to recruit me. But at the present time, with my other endeavors, you know, I mean, I don't want to take on a full-time coaching job, but I'm very, very sincere in offering, continuing to offer my support to these kids in Cavalier Manor, and I would appreciate if you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you for your support and what you do with those kids, and that was one of my reasons to get you off of your porch, Ms. Johnson. When I walked over there to meet with the group to walk, you were on the porch, and I said, "How can I get her off of that porch?" And I said to Mr. Joe Wright, "I'm going to walk over on that tennis court, and I guarantee you, she's coming off of that porch." And before I got on that tennis court, you were over there on that court. And so, I was trying to provoke you to come out and walk with us, but I appreciate the conversation, and seriously, thank you for your efforts. Well, you're right. It's important in this country that that sport thrives like all others, and that we need to make sure that we have the assets and the facilities to be able to do those things. But thanks. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Johnson, being here reminds me about, probably about a couple of months ago, I thought about Ms. Johnson and her speaking to this body about the condition of the tennis courts in Cavalier Manor. But I had the occasion about two months ago to stop by the tennis courts at Wilson High School. And first time I've been on a tennis court probably in 20 years and probably about 30 pounds ago. I was utterly shocked at the condition of the tennis courts. Had the cracks similar to what you described out in Cavalier Manor. Had weeds growing on the courts. One of the courts, the net was down on the ground. There was no trash can available. There was gravel on the court and other debris. We're going to be talking about recreation facilities and the need for recreation facilities. I challenge us to, let's fix what we got before we move on to something new. Let's show that we can keep what we have in good condition. I think that anybody stopping by those tennis courts, and I'm sure Cavalier Manor is the same way, is not conducive to even recreational-quality tennis, and we need to change that. We need to... I dare say that probably some of the other tennis courts at our schools and other facilities aren't up to par either. So, I want to thank you for keeping that on the forefront, Ms. Johnson. Hopefully, you'll come here one day and say they're in great shape, they've been fixed, and, you know, the kids are becoming little tennis stars. But thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Randall?
Okay. First of all, I commend Ms. Sinise Johnson, her brother, and the family because from the beginning, you were the key person, one of the key persons, who motivated a need for the residents of Cavalier Manor to have the tennis court. And your family and your brother have been out there all the time. And I know Mr. Wright can bear that out because he was out there too pushing for the recreation for the children in that area. I think we've come a long ways, but we still have a long ways to go when it comes in terms of maintenance of these facilities, once we put them out there for the community. That has been one of the shortfalls. So, I think if we can pull the communities together to really work, that at one time was the only tennis court that was seen in it that children of color could play tennis on. And so, I think we need to keep that going along because many of the young children got their beginning skills out on that court. And Mr. Wright, I can remember you out there helping to get some of those things put in place too, and your family. So, I think we need to just pull together, and the city put in to help. We can have the courts that we once had out there. We had some delightful courts out there, but they were not maintained. And yet, we still have a large number of students who are playing tennis, and it adds to the quality of life for the residents in that community. So, we're with you all the way. When you come by, our ear is always there to hear what you're saying. Thank you for... Don't give up.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live at 3104 Garland Drive. Principal of Liberty 19. Only limited and carefully-defined powers should be delegated to government, all others being retained in the people. What are the defined powers delegated to the Portsmouth City Council? One of the founding fathers, Alexander Hamilton, wrote, "What is a power but the ability or faculty of doing a thing? What is the ability to do a thing but the power of employing the means necessary to its enforcement? What is a legislative power but a power of making laws? What are the means to enforce a legislative power but laws? Municipal freedom flows directly from the doctrine of the sovereignty of the people. The people's sovereignty blends with their customs and then supported by the city's laws. City institutions bring freedom within people's reach and give them the enjoyment and practice, use me, their unalienable rights for peaceful ends. Our representatives are the executives of the will of the people. If city council were to introduce some change in the established order of things, they need to return to the source of their power, the citizens. The city council makes laws to protect the dignity and freedom of the individuals' American way of life. What powers are retained in the people? The American way of life are the political and economic rights that protect the dignity and freedom of the individual. These are our rights, to worship God in our own way, to free speech and press, to peaceably assemble, to petition for redress of grievances, to privacy in our homes of habeas corpus with no excessive bail, to trial by jury. We are innocent until proven guilty, to move about freely at home and abroad, to own private property, to free elections and personal secret ballot, to work in callings and localities of our choice, to bargain, to go into business, compete, make a profit, to bargain for goods and services in a free market, to contract about our affairs, the right to the service of government as a protector and referee, and the right to freedom from arbitrary government regulations and control. Our rights rest in our constitutional government. It was designed to serve the people. Our rights are undergirded by our fundamental belief in God, which is the only reliable basis for sound government and just human relations. Our government in Portsmouth is supposed to be structured to permanently protect the people from the human frailties of our leaders. There's a problem in Portsmouth that prevents our structured government to protect the people from the human frailties of our leaders. What is the problem? Violation of structured communication. The first breach of structured communication is noted in the Boards and Commission Manual. Has it been updated with the current contact names, dates, and times of meetings and acronyms identified? The second violation of structured communication is the Department of Economic Development, the Planning Department, and Zoning Department, and the Board of Building Code Appeal failing to work together as a team. Since the Economic Development Department is separated from other departments located at City Hall, the physical separation creates gaps in communication with them. It also gives that department a privileged status by an elite office space paid for by the citizens of Portsmouth. It also puts them in a position to communicate with the Economic Development Authority Chairman on a daily basis. The third breach of structured communication is the civic leagues are not part of the decision-making process of certain Economic Development Department and Economic Development Authority projects, such as the two breeding investment property contracts. The fourth violation of structured communication is the mayor's health initiative in February without coordination with the Health Department. City council was not consulted about the head dance that cost the taxpayers $4,000. The mayor has asked Parks and Recreation, not the Health Department, to incorporate some healthy initiative and workshops on diabetes. The defined powers delegated to Portsmouth City Council by the people are designed to serve the people. Are all the people of Portsmouth being served? No. Our rights are not protected because of the fractured structured communication in our city. We are in the process of experiencing an unjust style of government, a dictatorship. Instead of laws, we are governed by the whims of men. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mark Goddard-Gatrowski?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. An aside relative to Craddock's 95th Annual Independence Day commemoration and parade, courtesy of Portsmouth City Watch, there is video available on YouTube of that singular event in our city. Just look for Craddock Independence Day, and I think you'll be able to access it. I could give you the link, but you'd think I was speaking a foreign language. I come before you tonight to issue a Happy New Year, a Happy Fiscal New Year. As Mr. Rowe pointed out last evening, July 1st marks the beginning of our new financial year in this city, as in many cities within the region. I believe that the city should, as a matter of course, be providing information annually to the public about the investments we have made over the years. Specifically, the Renaissance Hotel and Conference Center, the Intello's Pavilion, the Sports Hall of Fame, the Ocean Marine Yacht Facility, Lowe's, and there are others. But, you know, you get the point. We, the people, through our tax contributions to the city of Portsmouth, have become partners in the private sector, and we deserve an annual report just as the shareholders of corporations receive annual reports, as to the financial viability of those investments. Now, it's important because all the details of all the transactions I enumerated are not in the public realm. There are documents that were signed and negotiated in the back room, and when there was no longer a necessity... was no longer a necessity for those items to be kept confidential, they were not published. I believe the public has a right to know what those agreements contain, and the public has a right to see how those investments are performing. Certain representations were made by your predecessors, Mayor, and council members, about how these investments were going to improve the bottom line for the city of Portsmouth, improve our standing within the region, and reduce the property tax burden on the citizens. From what I have seen, from occasional glimpses into the performance of these assets, that is not the case. In fact, they have consistently drawn money from the general fund, because their operations are not fully funded. Their operations and the debt service that the city has incurred are not fully offset by revenues from their operations. So at the earliest practical opportunity, I would like the city to file reports on how these assets have performed since we started paying for them, and what is being done to improve over time the financial return to the citizens of Portsmouth from them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Just want to say, I think you've got a very valid point, point well taken, and I think we do deserve, or the citizens deserve, to hear a return on their investment and on each one of those things. So maybe that'll be something we can discuss in our retreat, and hopefully, we can be able to provide you with as much information as we can. That is, I don't think that's out of the realm, do you, Mr. Manager? Yeah, okay. We actually, I don't know if you was in work session, when we talked about the meeting the manager and I just had with the Renaissance, and then there was another meeting with Mr. Moody and the manager with the Pavilion folks?
Yes, Mayor.
And so, yeah, you're absolutely right, and we'll see if we can't get that in order. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Ms. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. To go along that line, you know, to ensure that the citizens, in this case, is in effect stockholders in these different entities, the agreements themselves, all of these agreements, I believe, have things that performance clauses of some sort. Either things that businesses are supposed to obtain a certain level of employment, in some cases, some cases parking revenue, but, you know, these businesses, the management changes, sometimes ownership changes. And I think when it comes to those agreements, along with the annual report on the fiscal performance, that we need to also look at the agreement compliance, that all the things that we're supposed to do, all the things that those parties are supposed to do are being complied with. But your point is very valid. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Madam Clerk?
Our final speaker is Ms. Ursula Murphy.
She's sweet. She's sitting in the back. She has some pictures.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council. My name is Ursula Murphy, and I work and live in the city of Portsmouth. My reason for being here tonight is to ask you to intervene on behalf of the citizens of Portsmouth in regards to the conditions of our highways and the on-ramps and off-ramps, and secondly, to help resolve a revolving issue regarding the London Boulevard overpass at Broad Street. My specific concerns regarding our highways are in relation to the grass that has not been cut at all this year by VDOT. The pictures you have before you were taken this morning, with the exception of the Frederick Boulevard off-ramp picture number one, that I took on June the 24th. As you can see, the grass along the off-ramp onto Frederick is quite high. The second picture taken this morning shows the grass even higher. And the third picture is taken of the on-ramped 264 westbound from Frederick Boulevard. The next picture is of 264 westbound, just beyond the Victory Boulevard overpass. As you can see, the grass and weeds are quite tall. If a vehicle were to go off the road in this area, it would not be found for the overgrowth. I mean, it's horrible up there. The next picture is of the 264 off-ramp at Greenwood Drive. You will notice that the Eastern Amateur Golf Tournament sign is attached to the exit sign for Greenwood Drive. Ladies and gentlemen, the Eastern Amateur Golf Tournament brings amateur golfers and their families from all over the country and the world to Portsmouth. You know, this is not a welcoming sign for these folks. The next three pictures are of the 164 west and off of road on-ramps and off-ramps. I know two council members that drive that road to and from work pretty much daily, you know. Finally, the London Boulevard overpass at Broad Street. I've been complaining for four years about this area. To Ms. Hogg's credit, she was able to get somebody out there last year to cut this overgrowth back. And it was cut one time last year, one time in four years, and that's unacceptable. This roadway is owned by the state of Virginia, well, Virginia rather. The state pays the city to maintain this roadway, and that's according to VDOT. I don't know who's responsible, and I really don't care. It needs to be taken care of. I offered to cut this property last year, if I could coordinate with the police department, the safety of my employees, myself and my employees. I was informed by Parks and Recreation that I would have to fill out an application, pay a $300 fee to cut this overgrowth. Needless to say, I didn't do it. I just really would like your help with all of these issues. As a homeowner and property manager in the city of Portsmouth, I get a courtesy letter from Environmental Services if my grass gets more than 10 inches tall. I don't know if anybody else has experienced that. If I don't cut it within the timeframe, which is usually seven days, then they will send me a violation notice, telling me if I don't cut it, they'll charge me a contractor fee and a $150 administrative fee. You know, and what I'd like to say is, you know, I don't, you're going to hold me to the same standards? I want you to hold everybody to the same standards. And, you know, I don't want us to be in the newspaper like Hampton was last night, where the tall grass, they're looking at being the cause of an accident, a deadly accident. So, thank you very much. Appreciate your listening.
Well, thank you, Ms. Murphy. Just to give you a little bit, you can go back to the mic, of what I know, a year and a half ago, we got into deep conversation about this very subject. I actually called the VDOT administrator and inquired about their cycle, and he told me it's a statewide policy that they're only going to cut three times a year. And that was very disappointing, and based on that, we actually had the manager last year to go and get some quotes of what it would cost if we did it or we subcontracted it out, because we've got about seven of those exit ramps that really do our city poor justice. And the figures that we got were astronomical to be able to pay that cost. And so, we talked about the beautification piece, maybe we taking over the coming out of the downtown tunnel, which is the first impression that is also unkept, and some of those other ones. So maybe we need to revisit it again, but the state's only going to do it three times a year, and this is a Dillon Rule state, and we can hold our citizens, we can send a letter to the state, let them know that the grass is too high.
Well, it's almost the middle of July.
I understand. And we're with you, and it's bothersome.
It is.
Because it makes a difference on how we look, and we are making a concerted effort to beautify our city and do some of the things that just goes with being proud to be in this city, and the state is not working with us in that regard, and they're letting us know that it's statewide, though, it's only three cuts a year. So would that, anybody want to add anything to that? Ms. Moody?
Yeah, I will, Mayor. I had the occasion to take a road trip of about 700-plus miles to the NASCAR race over the weekend in Daytona Beach. And the thing that was most noticeable, once you get on 95 and get out of the state of Virginia, the roads improve tremendously. Not only do the roads improve, the beautification improves. You know, if North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and Florida can beautify their roads, the Commonwealth of Virginia should be able to do it also. And it gets particularly bad once you make that right-hand turn on 58 East off 95, heading to the cul-de-sac of Hampton Roads.
Yep.
And, you know, if the state only does it twice a year, if my colleagues support it, I think we should put it in our legislative package, that we want it done more than twice a year, and we want wildflowers planted at our exits. And this thing about, well, we can't do the gasoline tax, because it'll raise the price of gasoline. The other thing I noticed on the trip was, I purchased gasoline in Georgia, South Carolina, and North Carolina. The lowest I purchased it was 309 a gallon. Now, their gasoline tax is higher than the state of Virginia. My question is, what are we doing with the money? It's certainly not meeting the road, it's certainly not meeting the beautification of the state. I think we need to get tough. We need to get a voice as a region, as a city, as a region of Hampton Roads, and tell them, "This is not going to be tolerated. We want more." You know, this cul-de-sac, we might be a cul-de-sac, but we're not going to be a silent cul-de-sac. We want services, we want beautification, and we want roads that doesn't tear our cars up. But anyway, I could, I'm like you, I could talk about that for a long time.
You're on a roll. That's good, sir. All right, Dr. Edmonds?
Ms. Murphy, I think we all agree, I rattle around and come off these ramps all the time. It looks like a jungle out there. And I think Councilman Moody hit it right on the head. We need to move more aggressively with our legislators to make sure that they try to get it in, and if not, collaborate with the sheriff some kind of way, and get working crews out there, and prioritize it, and start whacking it down. And maybe see about getting you out there too, without having to charge you that $300 fee. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. Ms. Simmons?
I concur with Dr. Edmonds. I was going to say, and I feel like we talked about this in the last couple of days, about Mr. Rowe mentioned talking to the sheriff about doing this, and I think it's worth a phone call, and I bet he'd oblige. The other thing, completely off-topic, if you'll forgive me.
Yes, ma'am.
I forgot something about the museums I really wanted to say.
Sure.
May I? Just to remind particularly those at home who are active-duty military and their families, our Portsmouth museums are all part of what is called the Blue Star Families and the Blue Star Foundation of the United States. And what that means is that all active-duty military and their immediate families can go to our museums, the Children's Museum, the Naval Shipyard Museum, the Cultural Center, the Life Ship Portsmouth, for free through Labor Day. And that's underwritten by the Blue Star Foundation. So for those at home watching this, it's a great thing to do on a hot summer day, is take your kids particularly to the Children's Museum.
Okay. Very good. Madam Clerk? Are we done there?
There are no additional speakers.
Okay. We're adjourned. Good night. Thank you.